I've done a study, this was two or three years ago, on this particular property. We paid this woman five grand or 10 grand to look at this. And she says, well, it has to be redeveloped. Well, we have to, we have to decide. Let Tom get in here, let him look at the area, and then he can give us his opinion about a TIF. I know, I'm sort of against it, but, you know, we've got to do something. And we're just standing still. We have a B4 that's on the table, so something, we don't know where that's going. We got, we got, we went through a whole thing on a Saturday, and everybody made plans. That's on the table. That hasn't even come up. So we've got to do something. So why don't we just get, sure, it's going to cost us money. Every time you turn around, everything costs you money. You can't go anywhere. You buy a gallon of gasoline, it costs you money. So, I mean, you're, let him come in and let him do this area, and then he can tell you approximately if it's worth it or if it isn't worth it. And we're just, all we're doing is banging our lips here and not getting nothing done. That's all I've got to say.
I just got a couple of things to say. Once those, that charrette that comes up, you'll see some of the nice ideas, because I attended that Saturday. A lot of nice ideas. It's true, this, this area here is approximately 40 years old almost.
Just about.
Okay. I'm looking at Addison over at Lakeland 53, and they've turned that empty property into a major gold mine between those restaurants, jewelry stores, and whatnot. And all we're doing is basically talking about it. We really should move forward and do something about this.
Mr. Alderman Wesley?
First of all, there's a couple of questions here. We have seen money done on studies before, and you can see on the shelf. We have never gone, like Joe said, it was Sue Huckner that did that study over there. We have always gone against studies. My opinion, I think we should go forward and see what we could do with this property and, and see what it may cost. It might not be feasible, but Georgetown Square has not put hardly any money into that complex at all. Okay, hardly nothing. And you know what? You, I don't know if you go in some of those buildings, I go in those buildings all the time, those buildings are falling apart, especially the one office building in the corner that's not, the good part that I'd like to go revisit this, is a TIF district. First of all, if you look at what it's going to cost us, if we say we don't do a TIF, or we come back and they said it's not qualified, we are looking at spending some major, major bucks up there to redo sewer and water lines up there. Here's a perfect opportunity for us to take a shopping center and almost have that development, if we TIF that area, to pay for those structures for that area. There's a lot of money, if we don't, that's going to cost us fortune. I was on, this happened a couple of months ago, they had a water main break behind Station Drive, right behind the Chinese buffet there, or the steakhouse, I'm sorry. And it took our guys, after repairing, it took our guys almost nine hours, and I'll tell you one thing, it's, the whole line is bad over there. Okay, Station Drive always floods out. We need to look at that. I think we should go ahead and look and see, I, you know what, I may vote against a TIF district after it comes back, but to take the money and to see, I mean, if you're only looking at $7,000, $10,000, you know how much money we've been paying for studies in this community, in this community before I came on board? We were paying $30,000 and $40,000 for studies, okay? And they sit on the shelf. This is an opportunity to bring economic into our community that we have been fighting for from day one. Matter of fact, Addison, if I am not mistaken, the Addison Township building across from the banquet hall is, that is really, and Green Metal Shopping Center, I believe Addison is considering to TIF that whole area to keep that going. I mean, that's a bigger area than us. I think we should let them go ahead and do the study, because, you know what, $7,000, $8,000, $10,000 is fine, but the $40,000 studies that's been seen on the shelf that we haven't done with, or we go against the study whatever comes back, I think it's worth the visit. I didn't say, the revenue for the Park District and the School District and all that, I understand that they will still get the money that they're guaranteed, they just will not get the increase on a TIF district. That's the way I'm understanding it, and I did some homework on TIF districts. We could work on that. We could work on that. We could put in a TIF district that whoever comes and develops this, that they have to, just like we do with the contractors now, that we are asking for donations back to, for our train station. Maybe whoever developed this has to make a contribution back to the school or where it could be affected. We have done that with development for our train station. We could look in that. I agree, 23 years, maybe it's too long. You cannot compare us to Bensonville. Yeah, they got the most TIF districts in the Page County history. You're right, they all failed us about, okay? But I, we aren't looking to do 14 of them. We are looking to possibly do one TIF district, bring economic into this community, which we need the revenue. We have not done it, we have not, obviously, perfect example, we just lost revenue for a joint, a high-rise that was being built that we had no say-so in. What could go in there? Maybe a doctor's office, and we already lost that storefront. Do we want to continue to do that? I think we should go forward and let them do the study, and Dan, I agree 100%, we need to see what this guy has to say too, the economic development guy, the consultant. Because I haven't heard from the guy in a long time either, and we haven't got a report on what's been going on with that, which I agree that should come to us, okay? We got very little of it, but I'm just saying that we need to go forward due to the fact that if you want, go ahead and pay the money and replace all those water mains and all that, I don't think we have the money in the budget to it right now, unless you want to keep upping the water rates.
I think there's some very good ideas you had, if you can, especially the one about asking for donations for the schools to compensate for the TIF loss, if that's legal, I think, can the city look into that and see if that's a legal request to make?
Yeah, actually, three things to Alderman Wesley's comments. First, it is a study, but it's not a study. It's, it's not a study that we're going to just do a study and then throw on the shelf. It's, it's part of the process to do a TIF. So if we want to do a TIF, we have to do a study. So it's, it's not one of those types of studies.
But we'll know that the, after that study, or after that payer, we will know definitely if we're going to approve, if we go for the study, then we know we're going to use that study. We aren't going to put it on the shelf. That's what I'm saying.
Exactly.
I'm not approving another study that's going to sit on the shelf again.
Two, with the school districts, you're absolutely correct. There's nothing that says we can't enter into an agreement, that they could have some of the increment increase. There's nothing that says they can't. By the law, they're not entitled to it if we do a TIF. We get the increase. If we want to work something out, and we want to, believe, believe me, staff wants them to cooperate with the school district, and that's what Almerst has done, and, and we are willing to cooperate, and we may be willing to work with them in that issue. So, exactly.
To get an answer to Alderman Wesley's question, I think we have to ask the mayor, when is the, and Dan's question, it was kind of both together, when is this consultant going to begin work? How soon will he be able to voice an opinion on, say, this issue?
I have to defer to staff on that, but I do have a comment I want to make in response to Alderman Wesley, but let staff go first.
In reference to the economic development consultants, in your packets today, you have the original appendix, appendix A, scope of services. Staff was authorized to do the preliminary stage, and then after the preliminary stage, staff or the consultants would give a report, and then we would decide if we wanted to go on or not, or council would decide if they wanted to go on or not. We're at a point now where the preliminary stage was given to us, and most of it is in your packet today. And to tell you the truth, like I had mentioned before, there is no point in going further with the economic development consultants until we make decisions.
So you're saying that he, we have no timeframe when he's coming aboard?
This, I mean, the report is the next item on the agenda, and we were going to discuss that. There's, there's no phase two until you approve phase two. We want to discuss the phase one.
Okay. How much of that area is going to be left residential?
That's really in the plan that's coming forth on the 14th. We're actually, we're, we're definitely adding housing units, and we're adding retail at the same time.
When you add housing units, how are you adding to retail sales? How are you developing tax base if you're, if you're putting in houses?
Mixed-use development. You would basically be looking at a, and I don't know the answer. Again, we'll have to see what the plans, we have to see what the full, full work of it is, but probably a four to five-story mixed-use building that would be, or several buildings that would encompass the area of the Georgetown shopping area, and then a redevelopment of the apartment buildings to the south of that. The other aspect of it, that, that the reason why we did the charrette, and the main focus of the charrette, was to create affordable workforce, senior, young start-out, startup housing. So that would be an aspect that we would be looking for in this development of this area. So the impacts on the school districts and everything would not be as, even though we may be adding units, the impact to, to school districts and that would most likely not be as high.
Well, you know, I'd like to compare this to the Willmett project, where they actually own the land, when you're talking about affordable housing. The concept behind affordable housing, I'm going to call it the Hawaiian Plan, because out in Hawaii, you have these 99-year leases, and, and they don't give up ownership even though somebody else develops them. And that's what you're doing in a successful program like on the North Shore. The city started to own it, then they turned it over to a tax-free, I don't want to say charity, maybe you can help me with the correct word for it, but organization, but it was sponsored by, created by the city. It never existed before, and then they take over ownership. What happens is that a young couple comes in, they buy the, the house, and let's say they pay $200,000 for a $300,000 house, because this, the, the organization owns the land, they have the value of the other $100,000. So 15 years later, the $300,000 house goes to a $400,000 house. But the actual house only went from 200 to 25. So the city, or in this case, the organization, keeps the increased land value, and the people then have to sell the house, realizing a 25%, a $25,000 gain, and they have to sell it to another person who is in the same economic situation. That is to say, under $40,000 today in income for one person, or $80,000 for two people. This is the same thing for an elderly couple. In an elderly couple's situation, it's probably more likely that they'll stay in there till either they die or they have to go to an assisted care facility, in which time the money would be going to pay for their assisted living facility, or it would be going to their heirs. But in all cases, the, the land value becomes the property of the organization. Now, having said that, if you're planning to have affordable housing, and we only know of one successful plan in the state of Illinois, how are you, are you going to be the owners of the land? Go ahead. Mr. Williams.
There, there's several successful programs. We have an entire book that was put together by the mayor, the mayor's caucus, and I can go through those. Offhand, I can think of several other communities that have done this. How we choose to approach this will be up to the city council. We will be proposing different scenarios for you to consider. But again, it, it appears that, that the problem with planning is, is that planning goes in steps. It goes one, two, three, four, to five. And what I'm hearing is, you would like to know five right now, instead of going to one, two, three to get to five. We're not ready to give you that information yet. And what we have identified, based on the information we received from the, the consultants, is that the next step is to consider this area for a TIF, and that's what is before you tonight. That, and this is not, that, that we're going to do a TIF here, it, it's just that we're going to go to phase one to determine the feasibility and the impact, to answer some of these questions that you have, to get to five eventually. We can't project all that, and, and again, I, we would like to have that information for you. Planning is, is going step by step. And that's where we're at right now, we're, that's going to be the next step. That's what we're proposing. And then we can, if, if you vote on this issue, then we can move to the next report from the economic development consultant, and then we can take this information back, we can put it together, and we can move forward.
Okay. I'd like to take questions from the council. Mr. Cadella?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have, I have a few things, if, if you don't mind. First, I'd like to say that this area does seem appropriate for TIF, from, from what I've read about it. It seems to meet several of the conditions that would be requirements to be able to consider this as a TIF district. Secondly, with this kind of frontage along Irving Park Road, it seems the commercial possibilities are pretty great. So while that is not necessarily a condition to TIF, it seems like an added advantage. Question to staff, is there a cost to find the study cost? If we say, go ahead and proceed with the RFQ, other than staff time, is there, is there a cost to get us to that point where we then decide to proceed?
No.
Thank you. And then finally, more of a, you know, more, more of a, a future issue, if this were to go through and be considered. We've, we've got a, we've got a pedestrian bridge that may be considered underutilized right now. Perhaps some kind of a redevelopment of this area might be able to tie into that bridge and start making it more useful, and perhaps even help tie into the commercial area across the street. So yet another advantage to seriously looking at doing something here, be it a TIF or whatever. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alderman, please.
Thank you. Just want to ask a quick question of the staff. Let's say the, we go along with the study, and it comes back that the TIF can't be done here. Does the city have other options or incentives that we can entice a developer other than a TIF?
We've already had several developers come in and look at doing this development, and they came in, they looked at it, and they said, yeah, it's a good potential development, but unless there's some incentives, they walked away. I think we talked to three separate groups that were looking at this, of doing the apartments, redoing the apartments. If, in fact, this isn't the way to go, we'll have to look at alternatives. And again, we have the usual old alternative, sit and wait until someone with enough money comes in and can do the whole thing. However, if we do that, we lose control, as was brought up by other council members, and what we would like to do is start the planning process. I mean, you can look all around, and you can see some of the good things that have been done. And we basically looked at the good things that have been done, and we also looked at the bad things that have been done. Staff is, is aware of that, and we're going to use their mistakes so that we don't make them, and we're going to use their successes so that we capitalize on their successes. So many of these have been done, and again, I'm confident with the group that we have for staff to be able to look at these, plus utilizing the TIF consultant, which is probably the one we have, is one of the best in the area, that has done many successful TIFs. And he even told you when he was here that he would say, that if he wasn't sure of it, he would not recommend it to go forward. So we have a lot of safeguards built in, and we always have the alternative, yes, sit and wait until somebody with enough money comes in and does it. However, we've been waiting a long time. Can I make a comment?
I was going to say, Alderman, please, would you continue?
Thank you. The only reason I was saying is, like, that first study came back, and they said, it's not a good TIF. If for some reason they come back and say, this is not a good TIF, does the city have some kind of control that we can entice a developer to do something?
There is another mechanism called an enterprise zone. And we did have someone come in and give us training and explanation of an enterprise zone, but there's a lot of downside sides to that as well, and it doesn't give you as much capital to work with. That's normally when you have something, like, if we weren't replacing the whole infrastructure, we could probably use an enterprise zone to do a facade, say, on the other side, maybe by Target and Jewel, to freshen that up a little bit. And that would mean that the, the money would, would come from the taxes for that district. But it doesn't lend itself to this kind of development. Again, I would defer to the experts in this regard, and since we're just getting into this, we are going to go through this step by step, and council will be apprised at every step. This is just step one.
I'd like to know, do you know if Georgetown has a triple net lease, and are the tenants responsible for any upgrades that, that would, that you would, that you would initiate?
We, we do not know that for sure. What we do know is that the company that bought that, we had wanted them to demolish the whole thing and do the infrastructure and startup, and all they did was a cosmetic. And what's happening is, is that that's becoming less and less desirable, we're getting less and less uses out of that. And again, with a 40-year infrastructure, it doesn't appear that someone's going to come up with that much money to redo that whole thing unless there's some incentive for them to do that. And that's where we've been stuck with economic development.
So you're saying the beneficiaries of the TIF would be the current owners of Georgetown? A little elaboration, please. Elaborate on the no answer. Why, if they own it now and they're going to get infrastructure, why aren't they then benefiting?
If they were to do, to do the development, yes. If the, the, the TIF benefit would go to the person who does the development and puts the infrastructure in. If that were the current owners, if they wanted to, because of the incentive of having the infrastructure being able to be allocated through the TIF, they wanted to do the financing, do the development themselves, yes, they would be the beneficiary of it. If a develop, if an outside developer came in and bought the property from them and then developed it, that developer would be the beneficiary of it.
So do we know if somebody is bidding on this property?
At, at this point, no.
So we don't know who the beneficiary would be?
No.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Wesley?
I'll yield to the mayor at this time, because he had to say I don't.
I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
Unfortunately, that's kind of where it breaks down, is the cost to acquire the property then create the clean slate and the redevelopment. If you were figuring like $55,000 per apartment unit, times how many units are there?
Approximately 120.
So you have basically a $6 million cost to acquire that bottom two-block area, then if you level it, then you got your demolition costs, and then you got your rebuildings that you're putting back on, and then you're not going to qualify for affordable housing anymore. Well, by the way, that is something. This is an, an existing affordable housing area for Wooddale. And we're talking about leveling and replacing with affordable housing. Same thing with the shopping center. By the time you do the cost of acquisition, level it, and then redo it with another shopping center or another multifamily and commercial, the cost of acquiring, you no longer, it's economically feasible to redevelop it. In Addison's case, it was a open field. Well, it makes it a lot cheaper in your acquisition cost. I mean, I'm fully support the theory and the idea of the redevelopment, but economically, I don't see how this works. I was going to ask you, Alderman, comment on Alderman Wesley, that if the study is done, that we would go ahead and finish the study, not put it on the shelf. Unfortunately, we cannot acquire property by force for re-economic development anymore. I think there's something like 25 different parcels, I don't know how many owners of the property there. So we could complete the stuff, TIF study, could qualify for the TIF, and then one or more property owners objects, and you can't go forward. And there's nothing you can do about it. You can't acquire the property by condemnation anymore. So generally, I'm in favor of the concept, but economically, I, I don't see how it's going to work.
I think that's a very negative comment about this particular TIF study. Perhaps we should pass on it. How do we go about choosing a vote?
I meant.
What?
I have a question first.
Go ahead.
So, Mr. Mayor, well, you're trying to tell me that you don't recommend staff recommendation to go ahead and do a, well, let's not, let's say, not a study, but a look at making a TIF district. Is, is that what you're telling me now? Because obviously, now we're talking legal stuff, that you can't do this, can't do that. So is that what you're, you're saying here now?
I don't want to play attorney for the city, I'll defer to the city attorney, and if you want to pass this on to council without recommendation, you certainly could do that.
But.
But my understanding of the recent Supreme Court rulings, and I don't know how this affects TIFs, but you can no longer acquire property forcibly for economic development. Cities are prohibited from doing that. So unless all the property owners agreed, or you were building around those property owners that didn't agree, you could not proceed with this redevelopment.
So what your recommendation now, may I continue, Mr. Chairman? Your recommendation then is not to move forward, well, so more or less you say we should not do anything with this at this time and consult with our attorney and see if it's feasible doing. Am I correct?
I'm not quite that strong. As Mr. Cadella pointed out, there's no fee in getting a proposal for a TIF and knowing what your costs are.
There is.
But I do think at some point, we have to talk to the city attorney and see, is this even feasible? If we haven't done the homework in advance and talked to all these property owners and see if they sign off on the TIF, and they're acceptable to doing this, which I'm not sure we have talked to the owners of Georgetown yet, and that the charrette, when I was there, some of the apartment owners, I know were 100% opposed to this. So, well, it's, they have more than one parcel of.
Well, what I'm trying to say here, so more or less, we can't go forward with this, allow any money to go out, because what you're saying now is, I'm totally confused at this time. More or less, you're trying to tell me for the staff to recommendation to have someone even consider looking at this district, you, with your conversation here, you're saying that we should? Or could staff answer me that question? Or could the staff, or let me ask you this to the staff, could you possibly by next Thursday, I know it's a short time, or, oh, I'm sorry, the fifth.
The fifth of a, of a fifth week.
Could we possibly have what it may cost to have this, the person look at the TIF?
We are going out for proposals.
Excuse me, before you answer, and I don't mean to interrupt you, but Joe's been holding up his hand for the last 10 minutes.
I just, I just, I got something else to say. Go ahead, finish what you're doing.
Well, I'm sorry, Joe, but I'd like to answer my question, because that means answer to Joe.
Oh, you finish up.
Okay, so.
Joe, when they're done, you just speak.
All is we're doing is, we're doing a request for proposal to do the area. Then we'll have the amount that it's going to cost. And when we had the attorneys out to the city to talk about enterprise zone and TIF areas, they were the ones that recommended this area. So I'm not sure where that changed in regard to getting the property. But see, one of the reasons why you want to TIF it is to get the property owners to make it economically feasible for them to sell and to get together and, and do this. And this is what they're telling us. Again, we have never done this before, and all this would of course have to go through the attorneys, and we would look at this. But all is we're asking for is not to spend the money, we're asking for to go out for a request proposal to consider this as an area. And again, it seems like you want us to give you all the answers at this point. We don't have those yet. We're only at the beginning. And I would agree with the mayor, we certainly have to look at, at these, and that would be part of the request for proposal.
To continue on that, it's, it's, it's an RFQ. So in the RFQ, when, when we describe the project to the potential TIF consultant, we have to give them all the details of the area so they can tell us, tell us how much it will cost to do the eligibility study. Obviously, when we give them the details of the area and the numbers of the area, they would tell us if it wasn't applicable to that area.
Okay. May I finish one more? Chairman, so I'll let Joe go, but then I, I like to make a motion on the floor. I, I mean, I, I do.
There's also another way that we can get somebody interested, by sales tax incentive. In other words, give them a break on a percentage of their sales tax. That's another thing. Our property tax, that's another thing that's, can be done to get somebody, because that's what they're doing up in Wisconsin, to bring factories from Illinois to Wisconsin. They're giving them a cut on.